...and stuff, and I just happen to have three different ones in my car, so I just brought them all.
There's these three times on the special one that...
I see smoke in it.
Yeah. Cough drops. Now the mic's on.
It's that time of year. Mine's on.
Reconvene from closed session. Kimberley?
Yes, we convene in closed session for a conference with the city's labor negotiators. There is no reportable action.
Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
President.
Councilmember Malsen.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Huwer.
Here. If everyone will join me in a silent prayer followed by flag salute. If the sheet will fully dust and flag salute please.
Flag allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, December 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, December 9th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived at the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions? Moving on. Presentations. Recognition of the city commissions and commissioners, committees and commissions. I'll get that right. Okay, so, we have the Galt Youth Commission. The Galt Youth Commission serves as a resource and advocate to the city council on teen issues and performs such functions as assigned to the commission by the city council. We have the Beautification Committee. It acts as an advisory committee to the city council and makes recommendations on projects designed to maintain and improve the appearance of public areas within the city. We have the Commission on Aging. They assist in the circulation of information about the availability of services and activities for senior citizens and make recommendations to the city council regarding funding of programs for senior citizens. We have the Measure R Oversight Committee. Measure R is an independent citizens oversight committee. This is an independent oversight committee to ensure that the funds are spent in a manner consistent with the provisions of the ballot measure. Parks and Recreation Commission acts as an advisory capacity to the city council, makes recommendations to the city council on policy matters concerning parks and recreation issues. Planning Commission reviews matters relating to planning and development to make recommendations on goals and policies affecting the future development and growth of the city. And we also have the Public Safety Committee, acts as an advisory committee to city council and evaluates any public safety issues within the community brought to the committee's attention by city council, city staff, or residents, and to make recommendations to the city council. So annually, we like to recognize our commissioners and committee members for the service they provide our community. We could not be the community we are without you. I personally am very appreciative of the input that you provide the council, and, because you bring a different perspective and give us a community input that we really need. So, was any of the other council members would like to say? Sir Malsen?
Having been on a number of these committees and commissions over the years, I understand the time commitment that you all do, and we, as a city and as a council, appreciate every minute of it. Thank you.
Same thing. I mean, as the mayor said, the duties and the functions and what is accomplished by the committees and commissions is incredible and certainly a benefit to the community and its residents and certainly helpful for the council. So, thank you very much.
And I appreciate all the volunteer hours you put in. We couldn't do it without all you volunteers, and especially the Youth Commission, who comes and helps out of very many of our things, and all the other commissions that give the input. It's very valuable, and I appreciate you very much.
So, if the council will join me down on the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Be patient about it. No, I was gonna say, I've said it before and I'll say it again, our community thrives on volunteerism. If it wasn't for the volunteers and the members of the committees and commissions, we couldn't get a lot of things done. You are all valuable members of the team for the city of Galt, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
Get the cheer out of the way here. We should do your homework outside of class. That's what I mean. You gotta do your homework outside of class. Is there a portable mic?
Just use the podium. That'll be okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna start with the Youth Commission. We have Cilio Gonzalez, Daniel Traviso, Josez Cuevas, Juliet Rodriguez, Martina Muller, Maricel Franco, Paige Session, and unable to join us tonight was Amanda Yubera, Christian Gonzalez, and Olivia Klotz. Thank you so much. And joining the student members, I'm sorry, is the adult members, John Gordon, Lisa Klotz, Lupe Flores, and Tracy Cross. Without the adult mentors, our Youth Commission would not be the wonderful success it is. And John has done an outstanding job and has... Thank you so much. So, thank you. Thank you. Beautification Committee, Amy Sandu, Barbara Payne, Tiffany Manning, and unable to join us tonight was Darlene Brown and Fatima Lo... And we can thank the Beautification Committee for our beautiful tree in the foyer. So, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Commission on Aging, Alvin Roberts, Andrea Johnson, Penny Niemeyer, Robert Bellier, and unable to join us is Marie Hall. Thank you so much. Measure R Oversight Committee, Matthew Shelton, Ralph Cortez, and unable to join us tonight is James Claussen, Kelly Keegie, Tina Telamontes.
Dynamic duo.
Parks and Rec Commission, Angela DePrado, Chris Smith, Janice Williams, and unable to join us is Joseph Batondo and Kelly Keegie.
Thank you, Chris.
Ms. Williams was here.
Chris, you don't get a gift unless you have a...
She had to leave. Thank you, Chris. Planning Commission, Craig Morris, Doug Cannell, Paul Sandu, Sherry Daly, and unable to join us is Leanne McFadden. And the Public Safety Committee, Dave Dahlgren, Lio Laggie, Randy Shelton, Sean Farmer, and unable to join us, Richard Tellier.
Four amigos. They're making horns. Department head advisory committee.
And a special thank you to the city clerk's office who organized tonight's reception and gifts. Thank you very much.
Party's over. Wake up. You guys wouldn't sit and talk. This is your chance to get your swag back full makeup. Do you know what's that meant? He wouldn't tell you. Sixty of Amy's...
Dave. Dave.
Hey, they're on that Old Town. The Old Town... Collector's item. I may have to break into steel.
On to the next item, new employee introductions.
Well, there she is.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Okay, so I have two new members in my department. First, I would like to introduce you to Charisma Jimenez. Charisma is originally from Monterey County. She moved to Elk Grove five years ago and at the beginning of this year, she moved to Galt. Galt reminds her of the small town she grew up in, which is why she moved here. Since she has been in this area, her children have gone off to college. Then, she started all over again and she now has a three-year-old and an eight-month-old. Two years ago, she began working as a temporary in the Finance Department Utility Billing Division. Last year, she became a regular part-time employee and now we are pleased to have her as a full-time employee. Her background has been primarily in the accounting field and I find she is a great asset to our department and I want to welcome her here. Would you like to say anything, Charisma?
I just want to say that I'm happy to be living in the city of Galt and working for the city of Galt. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you.
And our other new employee is Michael Linford and he is our new IT analyst. Mike was born in the Philippines and raised in Northern California. He has an AA degree in network security. He has worked various small businesses throughout the Bay Area and he spent several years working as a break-fix technician for these companies. Then, he jumped to working with larger Bay Area companies such as IBM and AT&amp;T. While working at IBM as an analyst, he was able to achieve additional training in network support and server infrastructure. He developed white papers for standard server installations. While at AT&amp;T as systems manager, he was responsible for maintaining a large-scale server farm consisting of approximately 100 servers. As his career developed, he became involved in computer programming such as COBOL, C+, PHP, and SQL. Mike and his wife Nancy have lived in the Oakland, California, Oakley, California area for 20 years. They've been married almost 21 years and have three adult children. Mike enjoys family and disconnecting from technology. Got that disconnecting from technology to spend time in the outdoors hunting, fishing, and camping.
Thank you for the opportunity and I plan to go forward with helping the city out. Thank you.
Okay, next item, public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address city council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. And we have three. Mr. Robert Crowdy?
My name's Robert Crowdy. I'm a concerned citizen from the west side of Galt. That's the side of the city that during the month of October didn't even have one well pumping water into our water system for the first time in the history of our community. And that comes from a public record, from the city's records. I'm here tonight because I've contacted three of you personally, two of you by email, and one I met with personally with two other members of the community. And I was requesting information before tonight's meeting in regards to information that pertains to the audit that was done by Mays and Associates. Tonight, you have that on your consent calendar. And Mays and Associates has done audits for the city of Galt for nine straight years. Another record. That's the longest anyone's ever had that done. And that's four years over the limit, which is normally required and recommended. One of the things I have never found, and even though I've requested this information for many, many years now, is to find out if Assembly Bill 3773 and its restrictions in regards to the Galt market rental revenue, it's solely to be used for parks purposes only, if that was part of the scope of the audit. Now, I'm not sure if anyone is representing Mays and Associates tonight. In the past, they normally have someone show up, but I hope they hear this because I also sent emails to them letting them know the same thing. And I'll make a public statement here tonight. I feel very confident that it will not be part of the scope of the audit. In other words, if Mays and Associates was writing a letter to the city of Galt stating in their management letter that it was part of the audit and that we were in compliance with the Assembly Bill 3773 and its restrictions on the money spent solely for parks and rec purposes from the rental of the Galt market, everyone would be happy. If no one makes a comment tonight to the contrary, my statement's true. If someone can verify in writing that it's not true, that it's part of the audit, it's part of the written audit, not someone's hearsay comment, not a staff report, not an opinion, but something that's actually in writing. And I know that there's other things in writing. Over the years, I've found in audits that show that we are in compliance with certain restrictions of money that we do get. So, this would be an obvious thing if it was part of the audit. But it has to be part of the scope of the audit. Again, I don't think it was. I'm hoping that the mayor might pull the consent counter, item number five, and ask that question if they do have someone here from Mays and Associates tonight or if the city manager can respond if he did get a letter back from them, because I haven't heard back from any of the council members as of tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Al Baldwin?
Hold on. Do you have any response, Mr. Palazzio?
Yeah, we can maybe address the, you know, item number five is 2016, you know, update. It's not reflected what Mr. Crowdy was just discussing. And we can probably have Ms. Boyd make a few comments on AB 3773 and the audit process, if you want.
Has Mr. Crowdy met with staff regarding his concerns?
Not recently. We answer this question probably on an annual basis to Mr. Crowdy. And it's kind of the same answer that we give him every year, so we can kind of reflect that into the record tonight, if you like.
And I know I forwarded email that I received from Mr. Crowdy, so you are aware. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Boyd, you want to just kind of recap?
Sure. The item that is on the consent agenda tonight is the single audit, a revised single audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. A single audit is a federal requirement that if you receive in excess of $750,000 from the federal government, you need to go through certain audit standards. And in fiscal 16, we did receive in excess of 750 and we did go through a single audit report. Unfortunately, when it was filed with the state comptroller's office, they found some errors in it and asked us to revise it, which Mays and Associates did revise it. This is not the citywide audit. This is only an audit of the federal funding. As respects the, we have another item on the agenda a bit later regarding procuring of an auditing firm. And as respects the AB 3773, that item is audited. Those revenues are audited and those expenditures are audited as a part of the citywide audit. Parks and Rec is a separate fund in the financial statements. And how an auditing firm works is that they look at what you have, they look at your book of business, and they determine what is the risk. And so, they determine where they need to examine. And every year, they determine what they're going to examine. So, they might examine gas tax revenues one year to see how you're spending them and they might examine, you know, the revenues from the Park and Recreation Fund one year and how you're spending them. It is simply a fact that Mays and Associates is aware of AB 3773 and they do look at it every year when they come out to do the audit.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boyd. Next speaker.
Al Baldwin?
It's a little tight here. Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, number two, because Bob Crowdy just got up here and he's been around in this council quite a while. And I think I beat him by a year or two or three or four. But it's good to see that ex-council persons do come up and still get involved with the community. That's great. I love it. Tonight, I'm a concerned citizen also and in a city that's completely a beautiful, wonderful city of character, and it is. And all of you will be seeing more about the Character Coalition in the future. Right now, I'm speaking on Old Town traffic. I passed out, you know, since you guys like surveys taken and pay thousands of dollars. This here will probably give you an insight of what I'm about to say. I won't go into all of that. What would be an acceptable number of traffic deaths for my family? The answer is zero. The thing is, traffic collisions aren't accidents. They're preventable through smarter street design, targeted enforcement, and thoughtful public engagement. Angle parking can give more parking for cars, but it's not as safe as parallel parking. When you can see cars coming behind you, like on Fourth Street, now you have a large parking lot, so that should help quite a bit. Why am I telling you this? Well, cars are speeding on Fourth Street 35 miles an hour or faster. Now, I don't have radar, I don't have anything out there, but let me tell you, it's pretty obvious. And I think a lot of people are aware of it. They've mentioned it to me. We've discussed it here and there. I know the safety committee has had it discussed to them. They're also going on C Street in the Old Town area. You know what? There are no speed signs to say how fast you should drive. Why? How can you get a speeding ticket? There's no sign to say 25, 35, 45 miles an hour. So, it's like, go for it. How can you get a speeding ticket? Oh, that's amazing. But anyway, according to a 2011 report by the AAA Foundation for Traffic Pedestrians Struck by a Car Traveling 30 Miles per Hour Died. When vehicles traveled 25 miles per hour, the fatality rate dropped to 12%. That's quite a drop, just in a few miles, an hour driving. Something you should think about. There's no signs, there's crossing areas over there for people to cross, but when it's foggy or it's at night, you can't see those crossings. Now, the school systems have lights on their crossings. Now, you're getting a lot of businesses in Galt. You're starting to get more and more. Not only businesses, but you have an apartment house right in front of, or on Velvet Creamery and some of the other businesses right there. Also, on C Street and Fourth, you're gonna have more apartments and more businesses right there at Fourth and C fairly soon. How fast can they drive? You know, where are... You know, where are they going to park that's safe? And parallel parking is safer than angle parking, although angle parking gives you an extra one, two, three cars per 50 feet or whatever it is. And now that you've got a big parking lot, it might be safer to change that to parallel parking, even though it's less. But if you have crossings and people are jaywalking, what do you do? It becomes a major safety issue. Older people are living in the apartments up there, and you know, as old people, we can't see half the time, especially at twilight or dark. And even if you have lights over the parking lot, that doesn't mean we can't cross the street. But let me tell you, you better be ready, because those cars do speed there. And if you think I'm kidding, just take a survey. If you put a speed trap, a truck, or whatever it is over there to show how fast, they're going to slow down. You don't want that. If you had radar, that's another story. You could stand over here like you're taking a picture of them.
Al, you'll have to wrap it up.
I thought it was five minutes.
Well, you're down to six seconds. Four?
Oh, was it five? Okay, well, I'm done, actually. I've said everything I had to say. Parallel parking is right in the streets also over there. And make it safer to park and get out of your vehicle. You can't see cars coming at you when you're at an angle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Sean Farmer?
Good evening, members of city council and Mary, Mayor Hewer. Sorry, it's kind of a tongue twister there. Three things I just want to talk about tonight. One of them is, first, I'd like to thank the city for saving our trees. And no one's kind of came out, at least off of social media, and kind of thanked everybody. For those of you who don't know, there were some tree issues down on Fourth Street with roots causing some disruption of the sidewalks. It was a safety issue. The first plan was going to take the trees out. There was a public outcry. The public was very receptive and was able to go back and kind of revisit options. I've seen the new, what's been done down there. They just finished up. And I think it's awesome that we saved every single tree. I mean, it's, we went from, you know, going to take all of them out to we'll save what we can, and you guys kind of went above and beyond that and saved all the trees. So thank you for Parks and Rec and Public Works and those of you that are involved in that. We appreciate that, because trees is a big deal for us down there in Old Town. With that being said, my next topic is, it's that time of year, and leaves are a huge problem down there. And I know it's not the city's job to police up leaves. But in a perfect world, all the businesses that are down there would, you know, kind of keep their storefronts cleaned up themselves, which I try to do. But unfortunately, where my business is on C Street, there's not really a lot of businesses yet. So I've been spending an hour or two every other day at least blowing leaves and such. I would love to get with Public Works about the scheduling of the street sweeper, because I saw him down one day, and I literally worked hard to get all the leaves out in the middle and make it easy for him to make one pass, and he left. So I made a phone call to Public Works, tried to get him back out, and a couple days later, he did. But it's bad. I can't keep the whole street up. My father and I went out there the day of the parade, and we filled 20 garbage cans full of leaves and did almost the entire C Street in preparation for the parade. So it's just tough. I'm not asking, you know, I'm still willing to help do that, but I'd like to maybe coordinate when the sweeper's going to come so we can, you know, I know if he's coming at a certain time or a certain day, I can help get the leaves off the sidewalk, blow them off, and make it easier for him, and everybody's happy. Which leaves me with my third thing. The parade was really great. Had a great time. There's a lot of complaining online about the parade, you know, it doesn't go on the east side anymore, et cetera, et cetera, and all that. But overall, you know, the parade's great. I'm happy that, you know, we get such a huge turnout. The parade is one of those things that I look forward to in the community. I love Fourth July Parade, love Christmas Parade. They're my favorite events. And so I'm happy that, you know, we had that turnout. But just a little bit of constructive criticism, it would be maybe a good idea, just looking forward each year, if maybe we could place out a couple extra garbage cans on the parade route, or maybe do a quick little sweep of litter, because there was a lot of litter left over. And, you know, it's all left up to us businesses to walk along and pick it all up, which I did a lot. So, you know, but people would just sometimes just ruin and leave cups and stuff all over the sidewalks and stuff. So maybe just a couple strategically placed garbage cans to help people, you know, be mindful littering would be a good idea. Last thing is, I want to thank Councilman Mollson for my appointment to the safety, the public safety committee, which I feel like is a very important committee. And I was very happy with the first meeting we had. There was a lot of people turned out, and we talked about some good things. One of the things we actually talked about was what Mr. Baldwin was speaking about, which, by the way, I did not put him up to say that. So it's nice to see there's other people concerned about, that's something I'm passionate about, down there about, is the speeding issue. We talked about that. I brought some criteria to the meeting. Chief Sockman and Lieutenant Kalanowski were very receptive from day one, when I started bringing this to their attention. The PD was very responsive and posting officers at the intersection of Fourth and C, trying to, you know, maintain a police presence to try to keep people, you know, to obey the law and not run the stop sign all day long like they do there, and keep the speeding down. So it has helped. I want to keep this topic in the spotlight, though, because I feel like there's a lot of work still to do. I know there's been a lot of ideas. We kind of shared it at the city, at the Safety Commission meeting, and I feel like there's some positive things we can talk about that we can do to move forward. But I think I'm going to keep talking about this regularly at the Safety Commission meeting and the city council once in a while until we see progressive, you know, movement towards a final solution. I mean, it's never going to be a perfect world, but I just hate to see somebody hit down there. I see it all day long. People backing out of our spots in front of my coffee shop, almost getting hit. People are just inconsiderate. People doing 40, 45 miles an hour down the street. It's, especially on Fourth, we have a lot of, like Mr. Baldwin said, we have a lot of businesses.
Mr. Farmer, you have 10 seconds.
We have the Velvet Grill. We have the old folks in the apartments upstairs. So there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, so we need to keep this on the top of the burner. So thank you for my time, for the time to speak tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer.
Gail Weber?
Good evening. I'm Gail Weber. I'm here representing Galt Shop Local. I basically just want to thank the city, and I especially want to thank farmers and merchants, and Parks and Rec staff, and Public Works staff for helping us with our first annual Christmas vendor fair with the Lighting of the Night event. It was hugely successful, and I know there was a lot of work that staff had to do to help us put this on. And I would really like to publicly thank Armando for all his help and guidance and for putting up with me for doing this whole event. So anyway, I just want to publicly thank everybody for allowing us to do that. I look forward to doing it next year. I think it's going to be bigger and better, and I think it was a great addition to the Lighting of the Night event. Thank you.
It really was. And thank you so much for your work, Gail, because it wouldn't happen without you. It was, it was your vision, and we appreciate that you were successful in doing it. And it was. I heard lots of positive comments regarding it. So I think it's a great addition. Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, information consent calendar?
Item one, minutes of the regular meeting of November 7, 2017. Item two, receive and file warrants for the period ending November 21, 2017. Item three, Trail Ridge Apartment Expansion and Rezone. Item four, increase and authorize contingency for the wastewater treatment plant annual road improvement project. And item five, revised single audit report fiscal year ended June 30, 2016.
Do I have a motion?
Move consent.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Campion. God, I'll get this right.
What's doing with this?
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. For anyone that doesn't know, it's the first meeting, so I'll get it all right. Okay. Scheduled matters?
None tonight.
To the regular calendar, treasurer's office.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Tonight, there are two monthly reports on the agenda, which is September 2017 and October 2017. And I will just say, at the end of September, beginning of October, the big thing that occurred during these two months was we have non-local CDs. So these are CDs in $250,000 increments. They're invested in banks throughout the, throughout the country. There was just five of them that matured at the end of September and October. And so what I did, they were at a interest rate of 1.1 percent. Again, I bought them three years ago. I'm sorry, two years ago now. So I reinvested them at a three-year term, and I was able to get 1.85 to 1.95 on these three, on these five CDs. So, and with that, I was able to, for September, the average yield that the city received on all their monies was 1.24 percent. Because of now that I was able to reinvest those CDs for October, we now, we received an average of 1.34 percent. Not a lot, okay, but it's a move, okay? The, also, life funds increased three basis points during those two months as well. Interest rates are slowly moving up. And I'll also say that on December the 13th, I, which is next week, I fully expect the federal funds rate to increase 25 basis points. So I'll advise individuals this way. If you're looking to refinance your home, do it tomorrow, okay, and lock in your rate, because it will go up just a little bit after next week. With that, I'll accept any questions, but otherwise I ask for your approval for the months of September and October 2017. Thank you. Move for acceptance.
I'll second.
You have a second and a third?
Moved by Councilman Campion, seconded by, I think, by Councilman?
Tom.
Tom Mollson. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. City Council's office?
Discretionary funds, Cruz?
I'd like counsel approval to allot my $1,000 discretionary monies towards the Military Banner Program. The program is doing really well as far as the family members purchasing the banners. However, we're still a little short as far as the materials needed to post them.
Want to explain it? The program?
No, the program. Oh, the program?
Yeah, you have a chance to advertise.
Yeah, I can advertise.
You can.
Military Banner Program is designed to honor those that live in Galt or are part of the Galt area, that are overseas or serving us in the armed services. They're a vital part of the reason why we have the safeties we have and the freedoms we have. And it's only fair and right that we should acknowledge their sacrifices and what they do for us.
With the new, the Old Town improvements with the, can we now do banners down there?
Yes.
So we can expand the program?
And we will not be putting them over A Street or C Street anymore, because the wind just tears them up.
Oh, okay. So we're going to move them off of there into the Old Town?
Mm-hmm.
That's great. Any further questions?
No.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Let's see, motion was first. Okay.
Tom again.
Tom. Motion by Tom, second by Kurt. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Oh, motion passes 5-0. That's right. I'm forgetting that, huh? City Attorney, review of city council procedural guidelines?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Hewer and councilmembers. Tonight, at the request of the council, we have in your pack at the city's procedural guidelines, which will lay out various rules. Some are simply restate what the legal requirements are. Others are requirements that the council has opted to adopt regarding the procedure of meetings. I've noted a couple of changes that we should probably make as far as cleanup. One of them is in section 1.6.8 regarding commission members and the appointments. We got to see a lot of the commission members here this evening, and the Galt Municipal Code was updated in 2011 with some other updates since then for the commission members to clarify that they are appointed and, but serve at the, at the pleasure of the entire city council. I noticed in reviewing the procedural guidelines that it had the old provision that they served at the pleasure of the council member that appointed them, so it seems to make sense. We should be consistent with our municipal code, so I think that's a cleanup edit we'd want to make. Another proposed revision is in section 4.8.1. That section requires a majority vote of the full council for adoption of ordinances or city policy. The general rule is that for most items to pass, it's a majority of your quorum or the majority of the legislative body that's present. But there are some majority requirements that would require three votes or a majority of your entire body. And so ordinances are one of them. City policy is another that you have opted to have that requirement for. But the state statutes were also updated to require a majority of the body or three votes for your council for resolutions, payments, orders for the payment of money. So I think we should update that section as well to cover resolutions and orders for the payment of money. And if you're also inclined to keep the city policy, we can keep that, and then ordinances. So those are the main changes. The last change you made to it was to change the meeting time to 6:00 PM. So I think this is a good opportunity to review these, and I'll be coming back to you then with formal action, depending on what we discuss tonight, and if there's other items that you see that you would either like to change or some cleanup. I think there's one other I noted in preparing for tonight with respect to ad hoc committees that we might want to just clean up for consistency between distinguishing between your standing committees or ad hoc committees of the council. So I would ask if there are any other items in the procedural guidelines that you either have questions about or want to discuss or potentially change?
I had one question. It was on section 3.5.3. And I don't know if it was just the copy, but the city clerk has, I think, handed out a revised, clean version, or, I don't know, was this just a bad copy, you think?
Yeah, I think it was converted from a Word to a PDF, and that's what happened.
And that's what happened? Okay, okay. So you have the current?
Right. I handed it out to everybody.
The corrected version?
Wow, yeah.
The other issue that I know I had, and I think others, that was section 1.3.1, which was the term of the mayor and vice mayor office. It had been, and I think it was changed several, I'll say, five, six years ago. It was changed from a one-year term to a two-year term. And I think we've discussed this in the past. You know, I would, I, you know, for, you know, some 50 years, it was one-year terms. And, you know, I expressed that in 2012, and didn't really see a justification for a change. And in fact, I think it disallows those individuals that maybe want to serve or have the opportunity to serve as mayor or vice mayor. It disallows them that, depending upon, you know, where they line up in an election. So I would recommend that we go back to the one-year term for those two positions. So the only change would be serve a one-year term rather than a two-year term.
And as I recall in the past, if the mayor did well and nobody else wanted to be mayor, you could?
That's correct.
Continue serving.
I remember Mayor Sikelski probably served six continuous years.
Yeah, I think he did. I think he served six out of his eight years as mayor, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor Tony Goris served a number of terms.
It doesn't prevent that from occurring, but it does open that door, and it does provide an opportunity, so I think, and it's up to council to exercise.
So something like one year unless reappointed by the majority of the council?
Certainly. That'd be fine, too.
That we, that the council would reorganize every year?
Yes.
I would agree with Ted.
And I have no problem with it.
When did they switch it? 2011, you said?
12. I think it was 2012 or 2010. I think it was changed. I think it was 2010.
10?
I think it was 10.
I tend to agree with that.
Those are the only two comments that I have, looking it over, although I would, I do agree with the city attorney's observations on those two sections, and would recommend that those be implemented as well, and in the second, under 48.1, to include policies.
Do you have anything, Councilmember Lamson?
No.
Councilmember Mollson?
Do you want to dig further into the wording? Do you want to dig further into the, um, wording on ad hoc committees versus standard committees, standing committees? The city attorney brought it up.
Yes, so the, the ad hoc committee, I noticed in reviewing this that it had, that both standing and ad hoc committees would establish regular meeting dates, and typically, your ad hoc doesn't have regular meeting dates.
That's correct.
That's the purpose of the ad hoc, so I was just thinking we should probably revise that to just the standing committees would have regular meeting dates. Uh, and also, would be the only one required to be established by a resolution or formal action, since the ad hoc is usually less formal, and that is the purpose of it. So, it was, I can, I would return then with some cleanup with that to distinguish more between the standing versus ad hoc committees.
Now, again, more of a cleanup, which is, I agree with.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
I'm just reviewing that one we talked about earlier on 15.1. It's a little confusing. On committee members appointed by council, it's a two-year, it, in this, it says it's a two-year term, yet, all the committees, I'm aware of that I've appointed, the person has gone the entire, uh, entire term of my...
As a council member.
Yeah, that's...
That section 1.5, council committees, I think needs a lot of cleanup.
Yes.
It seems to have a lot of errors in it. It doesn't take into account, we have some committees that are three years, terms of office are three years, measure R, which is by, uh, you know, vote of the voters, and another one's three years.
And I think you're right, that when there were being, changes being made to the municipal code, and initially, from my review of the history, it looked like there were changes made to a couple of the commissions, like the planning commission, um, comes to mind, and maybe one of the others, to start and see if that worked. And then, the other, others were brought up to the same requirements and same appointment timeline, so that it's, they serve consistent with the appointing council member. And I think it just, you know, those were done at that time, and then, you know, you just, one of those, you don't think about till later, the, oh, right, the procedural guidelines, so this is, you know, a good opportunity to do some of that cleanup.
I, I agree with that. Being the historian of the bunch, I guess, I've been there before, it used to be four years. But, there was also guidelines, and they may still be in here, uh, as far as attendance and things of that sort, because if you appoint a member and they never show up, you know, it only goes on so long, and then, um, you're looking for another appointment, things like that. But, the four years seem to work.
I think some of that's covered in the bylaws of the different committees, attendance.
Yes, yes.
The other one is 1.5.9. It says all persons are eligible to serve on committees at the discretion of the city council regardless, regardless of citizenship, residency, or voter registration. We actually, on the application, require that they be a registered voter and a resident of the city of Galt. The only exception that I know of is we, there is a, there is an allowance for one member of the planning commission to be, to live within the, um...
Live outside the city.
High school.
To live in the high school district, within the just, boundaries of the high school district.
Should be the sphere of influence.
I think it's in state law, that...
Or is it sphere of influence?
I think it's in state law, where it talks about commissioners. If I'm not...
Planning commissioner?
I will double check. So, a lot of, so my suggestion would be on this, one, obviously, it needs some cleanup, and sometimes with provisions like this, it may be easier to simplify it and say consistent, you know, the appointment requirements will be consistent with the Galt Municipal Code, which now lays out more specific requirements for each of your commissions and state law, so you don't have to come back to this document and try to keep two documents consistent at the same time. So, I think that would be my suggestion, is that we maybe do some cleanup here, but also, maybe simplify it, so that you're not having to keep up with both documents.
Yeah, I was on the planning commission when they made that change, actually, where we went outside the city limits.
Yeah, because for a long time, it was required that you live within the city.
Yes, it was, but I believe it was sphere of influence.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember what the city did, but for some reason, I thought, I thought that state law doesn't really define composition of the, of the commission, but it was the city that defined whether it was sphere of influence or high school district, I don't know what it was.
Yeah.
There was a boundary set, I recall that.
If we can bring that back, then?
Yes, yeah, I will.
Do we have any other direction? Any other issues?
If I may, I'll meddle just a little, just to point out that last, on 1.5.9, that only applies to committees, not commissions, that's a different section.
Oh.
And you might want to keep the flexibility, if you've got a, a youth committee or, or something, where you might want an outside person that doesn't reside in the city limits to, you know, but is active with the school district or something, to have that ability. So, I'm just pointing out that there is a difference between a committee and a commission.
Well, yeah, there's another, 1.6 is boards and commissions, as compared to that one was committees. But, um, like I said, on the application, it's, it is stated to ask them whether they are a registered voter. Now, absolutely, the youth commission are not registered voters. I think then it's that they're, that they attend our high school district, isn't that...
Correct.
I thought that was right, yeah.
It's outlined in the Galt Municipal Code.
So, if we can just clean it up so that it matches the, or make it, simplify it so that we can just refer to the code?
Yes, I mean, live in the district, not attend, right? Live in the district or not attend?
Yeah, I guess it's live within the district. I don't, I'm not sure exactly. Okay. Anything further?
Thank you.
Moving on.
I think there's some homeschooling.
Finance Department.
Appoint a council member to assist the city treasurer and city staff in the procurement process and recommendation to the city council of a new auditing firm.
I volunteer.
Good, because I was going to volunteer you.
Well, that makes it simple.
Did you want to say?
Yeah, I kind of saw that one coming, so...
I, I think that perhaps I ought to say a few words, just to get it into the record of what we're doing. It is, uh, best practices that, uh, city rotate auditing firms every five years, and we have had maids and associates here for nine years now, and so, it's probably time for us to go ahead and rotate auditing firms. We are asking for the appointment of a council member to assist the city treasurer and city staff in the procurement process. Basically, the steps in that are to review the RFP drafted by the city staff and provide any changes or edits that you feel are necessary, uh, to review proposals received, meet to discuss, uh, the proposals, and choose the top firms to interview, and then to interview those, those firms. I estimate between February, uh, December and February, that it would probably take seven to 12 hours of your time. So, I'd appreciate the council having someone do that. Part of the reason, just to put this into the record as well, um, the independent auditor doesn't work for me, he doesn't work for the city manager, he doesn't work for any city staff. The independent auditor works for you, the elected body, so I think it's important that you as well have a say in who that auditing firm is.
Thank you, Emily. So, Mr. Molson has volunteered?
Good idea.
I'm good with it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We appoint Councilmember Molson.
I actually, um, because, well, work, we get audited, and you have somebody there every week doing some sort of audit, you name it, we get it. So, and to offend myself, I actually went and, went and became an auditor in, in, went to the classes and everything else, just to offend myself, so I know what they were looking for.
Good.
Okay, do we need a motion? No? Okay.
I don't think so. Do you, city attorney?
I was going to say, I would, yes.
You prefer, above?
Okay.
I move, we appoint Tom Molson, second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Campion. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Communication?
None.
None. City Clerk's report.
The subject is the Galt Historic Preservation Advisory Committee Appointments. The recommended action is to appoint to fill the vacancies on the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee with term ending December 2020. There are currently three vacancies due to expiration of the term of office. The first one is Craig Morris, who's a member of the Galt Planning Commission. Second is Daniel De Nier, who's a business owner within the Historic Preservation Overlay District, and Sean Farmer, who's a member at large. We advertise for applications on social media and also through the website. I've received applications from Daniel De Nier and Sean Farmer for reappointment, and the Planning Commission met on November 16, and selected Greg Morris to serve on the committee. Any questions, comments?
Donna, who are the other members?
Um, Ida De Nier, this Historical Society, and Eric Shiner.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess I have a question for staff. This is a committee that, um, in, in looking, in, that we haven't been utilizing, or maybe it's been underutilized, doesn't look like it's had a meeting maybe since 2010?
2014.
2014, okay. And maybe before that was 2010, because it's been a very long time. So, do you anticipate this committee becoming more active, or is this a committee that we need to look at doing something? I know it was created as part of...
The downtown historic, uh, specific plan, so it was a part of that, that's where it came from. And I would, uh, say that I think the committee is needed. I mean, there are certain tasks that are important to it. Uh, one that's specific is making certificates of appropriateness for demolition of historic structures, and I think having that body do that is very important. I will agree with you that they have been extremely underused, uh, in the past few years, and when I went back and looked at the current history, there does seem to be some large gaps. And I do think, uh, well, we missed an opportunity recently to bring a project to them, and it was an oversight on our part, and that was specifically the fourth and C Street Apartments, we probably should have brought that in. Uh, but, the facade improvements to that fourth and C Street building went to the committee or commission in 2008. The last meeting in 2014 was to put an antenna on a historic church...
Oh, I remember that.
On 127th Street. It was also a minor use permit, so there was a lot of debate, and it was actually good to have the feedback from the historic committee on that project, and actually, the planning commission, uh, disapproved the antenna based on the feedback from the historic committee. So, I would strongly recommend keeping this committee, and I always say that, and every time I've met with them, that we need to use them more, because I do see the value every time that we do meet with them. So, uh, I do have a project in the works, I, I do plan to bring to them as soon as we get an application. I got my fingers crossed that they'll actually submit. So, we're hoping to use that committee more, because they are valuable to the community.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
So, would this be a committee where you are not required to live in the city limits to serve on, on it?
They do live in the city limits.
Ida De Nier?
Ida De Nier is actually appointed by the Historical Society.
Right, just with our verbiage and everything, we're working on it.
This one is actually a little different, because it's based on the qualifications, so there are five different qual, or five different positions that hold, like Daniel De Nier would be the district business owner, then you have member at large with, which is Sean Farmer, then you have the planning commissioner, which is Greg Morris, and the Historic Preservation Society has a position, which is Ida De Nier, and the last one is also a member at large, which is Eric Schreiner.
Okay, just want to make sure we're covered on that.
Right.
Actually, in looking at it, the member at large has some pretty specific recommendations about qualifications that those people should have.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that we're exactly meeting those qualifications.
The past history of this committee has been very difficult to find people that have actually been qualified the way it's detailed in the, um, Galt Municipal Code.
Okay, any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second, you're going to make me laugh, second by Councilmember Lamson. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye, passes 5-0 vote.
Thank you.
I'll get it. Comments by staff? We can start with Mr. Winkler?
Well, thank you. I want to give a quick update on Starbucks. We seem to get quite a few questions on that project. Starbucks and the Arco AMPM just to the south are basically a cohesive development, but they were, uh, separate in their building permit submittals, and so, the permit for Starbucks, uh, basically went through, uh, no problems. The problems for the Arco was different, and they were doing the site work, so there were some engineering issues early, which really delayed the submittal, or actually, the approval of those plans. Uh, they have settled all that, they now have an approved building permit, but the problem is they got it at the wrong time of the year. So, they're looking to put in the tanks for the Arco and the foundation for the Arco AMPM, but weather is really kind of being a problem for them now. So, they do have all building permit approvals, they're just waiting for the weather to improve and really have the ground, uh, ready to put in the tanks and the foundation. Also, an update on Trail Ridge Apartments. I think the last time we spoke, we talked about the demolition of the house and the possibility of it being a burn down by CSD. They've determined that the apartments are too close and it posed a little bit of a safety risk, so they decided to not use that as a demo, so. Anyway, it'll just undergo, uh, standard demolition.
Chris, have, has, has there been delays on Starbucks? Because it seems like they are taking an extremely long period of time to construct.
Well, the Starbucks itself, the building, the shell is just about complete. We're anticipating, uh, tenant improvement permit for the interior very soon, but they can't do anything in the exterior until Arco goes, because the Arco permit was responsible for the site improvements. So, that is the holdup. So, Starbucks is held up by the Arco permit.
I see, well, they've done a lot of site work, though. They're, at least, the site work looks like it's getting...
Yeah, close, I think the site work near, uh, uh, East Stockton has been completed in some of that area, but the interior, uh, really, the tank placement and the foundation are, AMPM are really the important next step.
When are they anticipating putting the tanks in?
Pardon me?
When, are they going to put the tanks in?
Uh, they're hoping to do that soon, I think that was really the next step, but due to the rain and then what it does to the ground is really held them up, so the ground has to be dry, pretty much, when they do that.
I want it done right.
I want it done right.
Ms. Boyd?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Solis?
I do, I'd like to thank my staff, uh, for their hard work over the last week, Armando Morales, Monica Lopez, and Leslie Sheets, along with other, 30 other staff that participated in everything and helped us get everything ready. I'd like to thank PD and Public Works for the road closures, and, um, I just, I honestly have a great staff, and I appreciate them a lot. So, thank you if you're listening.
Chief?
On November 28th, we, uh, honored animal patrol officer Roy Markham. It was five-year anniversary of his, uh, death, murder here in Galt, and, uh, his widow was there, and family members were there, many of the community and, and staff were there, and so, I just want to publicly say thank you for that. Last night was our CAPS Christmas dinner. A lot of you in this room were there, and it was just an amazing event, a great group of people that, uh, all came together as a family and, and shared stories and sold gifts, and, you know, the gift swap and everything else, it was a great event. And then, finally, on, uh, January 15th is the five-year anniversary of, uh, the death murder of Officer Kevin Ton, and so, we are preparing for that, and, uh, want to make sure that everybody knows about that date, um, and the public is welcome, along with everybody, uh, in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, start with Councilman Campion?
Yeah, a couple, real quick. The, the parade was excellent, Armando and, and, you know, thanks to your staff and Public Works Police, everyone who was involved, it was, it was very well attended and, uh, and it was very enjoyable. I got my bill today from the city, and I was looking at it, and, uh, could we have a Bill 101, uh, review course, maybe at the next meeting? Because I looked at it, and they have the SR1, SR2, but that's a combined number, I thought it was going to be separate.
So did I.
So did I.
Because I thought we were going to show a breakout on how that was shown on the bill. And I think I've, I didn't have time to go through and mathematically check it, but I, it's a little confusing to the extent that it has residential flat rate twice. You read the small fine print, and it talks about a portion of that is on the old rate, and a portion's on the new rate, and so maybe at the next meeting, we could have something on the overhead, so those people that are interested out in TV land can watch it and understand. But I think that would be helpful. So, that's all I have.
Consensus, bring that back?
Yes.
I agree, yes.
Absolutely.
And, done?
Yes, I'm done.
Bill and, Campion said there was a lot of postings on social media that people's bill went up $50, and I believe ours did. And 30%, we thought the bill was going to go up 30, so?
Mine didn't go up 50, but it went up.
But a lot of people were saying it went up 50, so I thought that was an odd, odd number.
Two-month billing cycle?
Well, $15 a month would be 30. Anyway, so maybe we can bring that up. But Light of the Night was wonderful, thank you. Your staff outdid themselves decorating all, all the city vehicles, it was amazing. Thank you for providing for us, and thank you to Ty publicly for tossing, gently tossing candy out for us. He had to work both sections, both sides of the street, with his 40-pound pack on, so he was?
65 pounds.
65 pounds.
65-pound pack on, he was a trooper, so. It's just a busy time of year with all the, the events and all the thanks and everything we're going to. We've got this senior citizen luncheon, I know they're looking for donations for gift cards, but just check your calendars, people, don't miss things, and have a wonderful Christmas.
Councilmember Molson?
Oh, let me see, I guess, okay, I'd like to disclose that I did visit and tour Cal Waste. I have not, I had not seen their new facility, and for people to think that, you know, when they empty garbage, they just empty the garbage, it goes in a garbage truck, and it disappears, that's not the case. There's a tremendous, stuff happens technology-wise after that fact. I asked if they were going to go to autonomous garbage trucks, so, we'll see, maybe 20 years. I'd like to thank everybody that helped out with the parade. If you've got a list, I can start reading names off, but we'd be here all night, or probably sometime tomorrow. I was, had a great time. It seems to be growing every year. I think, you know, we ought to look at, I mean, I see it only getting better, let's put it this way, okay? So it was quite impressive, had a good time. Had a good time at the CAPS dinner last night. Chief didn't bring his gift.
Somebody got, didn't he?
It's an inside joke.
What gift did you get, chief?
I wasn't asking. Just saying he didn't bring it.
I had two emoji cups. That was what my gift was that I received there, and I won't say what the emojis were. But they're not appropriate for my dads, my kids love them.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Just repeating what everyone else has said, the parade was awesome, you've done an outstanding job, your staff couldn't have done better, with one exception, you are a real whip snapper when it comes to time. That poor guy going to the bathroom, he was left in the dust, so we lost four owls.
Is that where the owls went?
It was the keys to the truck, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, it was like, give me a minute, I'll go get the keys. It's like, you haven't got a minute, we left.
But Ty was a trooper, he?
He was.
Did a beautiful job for us.
6:30 means 6:30.
By your watch, yes.
That's all I've got, thank you.
And the performances in the, it was wonderful to see the community come out and to watch the kids' performances, I really enjoyed it. So, thank you, Armando, it was a really special evening. I had something else that I just want to run by the council. I have been working with, with Donna regarding, I would like us to, starting in January, have honor either a current-serving veteran, a current-serving serviceman, or woman, service person, military person, in our community, either a veteran or somebody that's currently serving, to invite them to come to our city council meeting, and to be honored at the beginning of our meeting, and to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I think that would be awesome.
It's something I would like to implement as mayor, and to bring that to it, so that we have, so that we can honor the?
Very nice.
Our servicemen and women in our community. The other thing was, is that just this item, brought it up, and I should have brought it up under the other item, so I'll just kind of say, our, the order of our agenda, it's 4.5 on the guidelines, I'd really like to move, to add an agenda item, and to add it up under, to add it up following public comment, that we have an agenda item to report out regarding the commissions and committees and boards and regional committees that we serve on. I know, you know, Vice Mayor Cruz serves on SECOG, I serve on Library Authority, we all serve on different regional committees, and I think oftentimes, by the time we get to the end of the meeting, everyone is really happy to say, you know, all the wonderful things that are happening, and I think we forget sometimes to report out regarding all of our other outside duties, and to just kind of highlight or report back to the council, since you're representing the council on, since we're representing council on those committees and commissions, that it would be great if we would report it out. So I think if we did it at the beginning of the meeting, I think it would key all of us to be a little more diligent about doing it. I think we all have been, you know, I forget sometimes, that, you know, what meetings have I attended in the last two weeks, you know, and to be able to report out. So if, if we could add that to changing that, or if Donna could change that, unless the council has feelings about not doing it that way?